Okay, it's September 25th, 10 o'clock. Call this meeting's order. Randy Murphy here. David Hamel here. I'm here.
Yeah.
Number four, approval of payroll warrants and claims.
I'll move to do so.
I'll second that.
Alright.
Aye.
Aye. Number five, approval of amendments to the last meeting, September 11th, 2023.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Aye.
Aye.
Number six, discuss possible action regarding the transfer of appropriations from Highway D1 CIRV to Highway D1 Personal Services in the amount of fifteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven dollars and sixteen cents. And D2 CIRV to D2 Personal Services in the amount of fifteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventeen cents.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Ayes?
Aye.
Aye.
I remembered. (laughing). I'm shocked. It is nice that Luis reminds me.
Yes, I understand.
You just sign the bottom, don't you?
Yeah.
And then David, you'll need to sign the three places.
Okay. Oh, for that.
I. Go ahead. You only need to sign at the two places at the top and the bottom.
And I just sign it down here?
Uh huh. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number eight, discuss possible action regarding the bridge inspection invoice number 676261.
I think that's much. We skip in seven. I mean, Donnie had it there.
Oh, the report? Yeah. Did he give you your report?
I'm not got mine.
He just... huh?
I haven't got mine yet.
Oh, okay.
Don't let Donnie call us one day and bring them tomorrow.
Oh.
He's...
What do you guys want to do? They're both of them. Seven and eight. Six, seven, six, two, six, one, six, seven, six, two, six, one, they're both the same.
It's just the invoice to pay. Payer ODOT will pay.
I think you're the one who signs that.
All the inspection that he does on the bridge, basically, isn't it?
You think that's the jurors? That's their inspection? They never tell me.
Yeah. That's up to... I mean, call them asleep. I think I'm the one who's got one. Do you have one?
Well, maybe I don't. I'd seem like it wasn't too long ago when we had those books.
Yeah, I mean, I think... Well, this is for that, that new bridge and that pretty new deal.
Uh huh.
Oh, oh.
That kid's better bridge since it was new last year, please. I, I think I can go ahead.
So, number seven.
Okay.
Discuss possible action regarding the report, the report of conference between Woods County and CEDA for invoice 676261.
I'll make the motion to do so.
I'll second that.
Ayes?
Aye.
I guess all three of ya sign that one.
Number eight, discuss possible action regarding the bridge inspection invoice 676261.
I'll move to adopt that.
I'll second that.
Alright.
Aye.
Aye.
Can you think of all for your, just that one?
Just that one bridge that...
Or the bridge that's there.
Do we not have the invoice?
Uh, yes, he already signed it.
Oh, definitely, yeah. Oh, okay. Alright.
Number nine, discuss possible action regarding the 2023 Homeland Security Grant Program, number 1550.055.
And that, that grant is from Homeland Security. It's basically just that communication service we have. It's to fund, uh, the Starlink, which is a low orbit satellite, uh, data service for it. Um, it's for the equipment and tiered service, um, for the 3500 dollars. Uh, they put that out to all their, their, uh, regional response trailers and stuff. Um, so it's reimbursement that grant.
Yeah, it is, really, right?
Well, it's, it's new since we've, we've got that trailer. We have something new.
Oh, so it's got about...
It's got an old satellite system that they, they're not keeping up the service on it because it's a little costly. But the Starlink is a new, new service, so it's permanent. They're pushing out to equip all these trails with it. Um, and I think after talking to Shelley, I think we have to do it kind of like the re-grant where we'll have to open an account, do the money in it because it's a reimbursement.
Mm-hmm.
And then, once it's, the funds are extended, I want to, uh, put that money back in and have to transfer it back.
Sounds good. I make the motion.
I'll second.
Alright.
Aye. Thank you. I should need to sign it.
So, we decided to launch the satellite.
Well, it's, it's, yeah. Satellite, it's, it's pretty new system, but it's getting pretty popular and stuff. You know, it's the service on it, even for residential, it's five hundred bucks a month. Pretty high speeds compared to what the old satellite systems are.
Take a lot of each, son. I don't know.
I think Shelley just needs to...
I, I did, I think John's on it. He needs to start designing it. I think you're not, you just can spot the video there.
Number 10, discuss possible action regarding the funding for training for Woods County Fire Department.
Okay, guys, they've been, we've been going over this with, and they, training, well, first thing is volunteers becoming, and they shoot again.
Right.
And, and having them trained is very, very important. Well, they're, they're gonna put on a class here, and Miller's gonna teach it. He has the ability to teach it, and, uh, I don't know, I, I've got a suggestion that we pay them. It's a six-day class.
They, they, some of it, they have to do them on at home. Their, their bookwork.
Yeah.
I think, but I think it's something that we need to do. We need to have... I know, I know. I don't, if we don't do this, they'll have to go somewhere...
Well, they're, they're gonna have to...
If they don't do this, we won't have them.
They're gonna, right, and they're gonna have to take off work for some of this stuff, and, uh, and we don't... We, we need trained firefighters out there, and, but we're gonna have to compensate them, I feel like, to, to keep them there. And I, Shelley, I don't know if there is a, I think that I'm willing to, to chip in. I'll give you a check today for a hundred bucks. And I think we ought to have a donation account specifically for this, but we need to decide...
We have one for the fire departments now, so we...
But, 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 uh, yeah, and I guess we'll have to do on the same one, but, but if it's earmarked for training, that's because of the current donation fund.
Right.
Right.
And I'll have to put it on the agenda.
That's...
Next week for that, yeah.
Okay. But, but I think this is something that, that everybody in the county, if, you know, if they want those, want fire protection and stuff, they may want to chip in, so I think this is going...
And then we'll cover what?
Directly to the, we need to decide, and I don't know, I, I thought under this agenda, I think we could probably do this, but...
We all have to have a resolution number for that count.
Okay.
Because we're gonna be in on that.
But, while we're, we might as well talk about this, how much do you guys think we ought to pay them per day? And, and the instructor?
So, so on this paper here, it just, I'll just run through real quick if you want. Uh, so Brian went through and checked, uh, so the $2,000 certification testing, that's the cost for the additional instructors, because although he can teach the class and so forth, separate instructors have to come in to actually do the certification. He can't be the one that does it. So that's, that's the cost for those additional instructors, um, for that skills testing and certification in the live burn. Um, and each student, it's, it's a $60 per student fee for this Resource One, and that's the online platform that they'll do their, their coursework on. Um, and then we'll have to have a textbook, and that's a $95 per textbook. Um, and then below that is just...
It's just the totals.
Well, a hundred and fifty bucks, they've got to buy the book and the training. They've got to expend that hundred and fifty bucks to do the training?
Well, that's discussion if the county wants to cover it.
I think we ought to at least cover that, for sure.
Well, I, I, I agree, but I mean, I think when the public reads about this, I think, you know, that this is a great place to donate for, but I think we gotta pay these guys to take off work.
Exactly, yeah.
And, and to get this training.
So, if, I mean, would it be such a thing that we see how much we get donated towards it? And then we cover the rest?
I think we need to, to do it, and just, we need to be willing to do it.
Right.
But I think...
Ermared up the training, they don't have to be used for the training.
Right.
And if we've already paid for it, and we get more donations in...
For following the parents.
I guess it'll have to be over.
So, basically, we're looking at about a hundred and fifty bucks to train somebody.
No, it's, it's more, it's more...
No, I'm saying for the training book, and, and then there's the $2,000 for that instructor on top of Brian.
That's for the several instructors that go out and do the skills.
But a hundred and, you know, it's costing that student about a hundred and fifty bucks to go to that training.
Plus one.
That's, that's a, that's a must.
That's a book, and, and what would we done, always giving them a hundred and fifty bucks to do the training? We pay for the book.
Right.
We pay for the, the extra instructor, and give them a hundred and fifty dollar incentive to do the training.
Is that?
Is that enough?
Well, a hundred and fifty's not very much for six days. I mean, that's all I'm getting at. I don't know.
Well, I think, I mean, here's the deal, we have trouble getting good volunteers anyway.
Right.
So, if we've got kids that are willing to take this class, and, I mean, I guess, I don't know down the line what we'll have to do, but I think right now, with what we've had happen over the last couple of years, I think we should, I mean, whatever we keep, we all, I think we ought to pick the whole thing up, what donations are.
Well, and, I mean, and, but that's gonna be an issue.
Right.
Well, and also it's gonna be further training.
Well, there'd be more than just this one.
There is, just for eight.
Right.
No, we hope, and that, this is a basic, this is the firefighter one class, but they're, it's starting at the end of the week.
So, is, if, what, what if we do the hundred and fifty for the book? And then do, and then give each a hundred dollars?
A day.
A day.
But that, I'm, I'm giving fifty to a hundred a day. I bet, I think we need to do it per day.
Right, do we just need to make sure we're, we're doing it all legal and all that?
A hundred, I mean, I...
As far as, uh...
Oh, yeah, they're gonna have to bring us like the...
Right.
Certifications, all that kind of stuff for us.
Yeah, paying the final, well, they pass the class and everything.
Yeah.
And, and there's also the deal, but yes, I think that's, but if we're gonna, we need to pay for the certification and testing, so it's more than a hundred and fifty per deal that's a half. In other words, it's twenty-one hundred and fifty dollars.
Well, we throw that extra...
It, it's a thousand, yeah.
Yeah, so it's with, with the cost of the instructors and the books based off basis, eight students is thirty, uh, $5,240 plus whatever you compensate, if you compensate the, the students. Brian is the instructor, they're the model. So, I didn't know the best way to determine this.
What, what?
Hey, right now, that's eight Woods Counties.
So, we have probably seven, fifty-six, we get fifty-six hundred bucks coming in.
She just talked about the win, if we pay them, which we will probably this first time, a hundred bucks.
Right.
She talked about mixing, so that's donated seventy thousand bucks or... With what we're gonna pledge it, seventy thousand total, if you, you cover those, those students.
So, so this, this time...
We might, we're gonna look at, we're gonna have to cover that whole thing this first time.
I think so, that's all, that's the best way to do it.
Yeah.
And then, for now, maybe that's...
But, but we're gonna be, if we have more that's willing, and the deal, and we need to decide if we're a hundred dollars a day.
We're trying for a timeline, I mean, as far as getting...
This, this course itself, actually, they start at the end of the week.
Uh huh.
And it's September 29th through the 1st, so this coming weekend, and then October 20th or 21st.
I'm definitely for training, paying for the training, paying for the instructor. The, the hundred per student, I, I, we need to kind of get that figured out. I don't want to shoot too high, but I don't want to shoot too low.
Right.
We need to kind of come up with a number of what, what it's gonna cost us as a county if all of them done it.
Well, if all eight, oh, yeah.
You know.
And that's why I'm thinking people might be willing to donate, like I am.
And that'll get the word out there, and we'll have a nest egg that we can do, or for future training next year or whatever.
The instructor part, probably didn't necessarily say fifteen hundred or something like that, when we have to hire it. Bring in an instructor.
The, the additional instructors is the $2,000.
Oh, okay. That, that's...
That's what Brian can.
Yeah, yeah. But just for that certification, it's two thousand if they don't teach, they don't teach any of the other stuff?
That, that, if they gotta bring them all to instructors to do the, the skills testing and the certification in the live burn is where those additional instructors, the $2,000. And then, if you get down to, if you...
But I thought that Brian could do this instruction on this one, but he can't certify him.
Not all the way.
Okay.
He can't, he can't teach the course and certify.
Certified.
So, it, it's a kind of a double check to make sure the instructor's not just signing off.
I know, but what I'm getting at is, next time around, if instructors do it all, this two thousand cover it? I mean, is it gonna cost two thousand this time, and then?
Every time that guy comes in.
To get the additional instructors to come up and teach them, to, to do the testing.
Right.
Because you can have one individual each course and all that, but the person who's in the course can't certify the trainees that, that passed the course. It's, it's a way to make sure that, that, that single instructor is signing off.
So, it's gonna cost us that every time?
Well, but it, what happens, I didn't know if Brian could teach some of the advanced courses. Or is this just, all of this is just pertaining to firefighter one?
Yeah.
He can teach additional courses.
Definitely.
Okay, but it's still, okay.
This, though, he can't teach it and sign off on it.
I, I got that, but I didn't know if, when it moves up the ladder, how much, if we're gonna have to at some point bring in other instructors to teach a class, is what I'm getting at.
And some of it just depends on the courses, and it also depends on how many instructors you're required to have for that particular class to sign on.
Okay, so it could be, it could increase in cost.
It could be more, it could be less, depending on the course.
Depends on, that's what I was trying to get at.
And, and the thing is, is, is we've already expended the funds from the tech center that they get for firefighter funds, we already have, had one course already, and we'll have another one scheduled for the spring, and that actually took all those funds out, back to that, so...
You know, firefighter one's probably gonna be our biggest expense, you know, that wild land training and, and other types, rope rescue.
There's a lot of that stuff that, that we could...
There's some pad mat stuff, maybe, but I don't think it'll get too carried away.
You know, and if we went through just directly, uh...
Very well money spent.
OSU or, uh, you know, Sherry Nickel will talk about, you know, some of those other, uh, courses are fully sponsored by that. If you pay that, it's like, uh, sixteen hundred dollars a student, full cost. So, I mean, this is...
That's...
So, this is...
I mean, you draw, you get very reasonable.
Well, here, okay, here's my question. I mean, I'm, I'm good with whatever, but we've got two decisions to make here. One for the, the students, which we, are you wanting to stick with that a hundred dollars a day on, or you want?
I don't, I don't know about that. I don't know about that. We could always increase, but can we come back, you know? I'd rather start at fifty, and if that ain't enough, then we need to give more. I, I think a hundred bucks, so to, to come up here and do training, they're taking off work.
Well, that's what I'm, I mean...
We're asking a lot more than not really giving much.
No, I'm good with that. I'm good with the hundred.
A hundred dollars a day is at least, I mean, that, I mean...
That's a start.
That's, yeah.
That gives it something for down there for more people to...
I mean, that, that's a little decision.
And then, then the other decision, I'm good with the hundred on that. I'm, if we're good there, let's just...
I'm good with the hundred.
Uh, then, what about the deal for, for Brian? You got, we got down here seventy-five to a hundred and fifty a day for his instructions.
I'm good with that, you know, it's, uh, seventy-five bucks is a lot cheaper than two grand.
Well, if it goes to the hundred and fifty, I mean, do we want to pay him less than we're paying those guys?
I would offer him a hundred bucks too, or, or more, I mean...
Well, that's what, that's what I'm trying to get at, is...
He's saving us a lot of money by doing that, so, well, I'm good.
Whatever you guys want to do.
Send him anywhere.
And, and these eight, he's gonna be, he's gonna be instructed, and we can't ask him, that's my understanding, there's some Alphatah County firefighters coming on. They're not in the eight, though.
No, they're, the additional costs, like, though, the guys from Alphatah County, we still have to pay for their, their books and their Resource One fees and all that, so, I think we'll be getting payment for them.
Well, I think we give him at least a hundred and twenty-five, if not the hundred and fifty at it. But, I mean, I, we got...
We get, but, I mean, that's pretty good spread in there from what he said, I mean...
Well, if you're giving those guys that come a hundred, and I think they deserve it, then he...
A hundred and twenty-five, or, I don't, I really don't mind if we give the hundred and fifty.
Okay, well, do it.
I'll make the motion, we give them a hundred and fifty dollars.
I'm good with that.
We need one motion to take care of all this, if we could, that way we...
I'll give Brian a hundred and fifty dollars, a motion to give the students a hundred dollars, and a motion to take care of the training cost, the extra two thousand and, and their hundred and fifty dollar books or whatever it is.
Yeah, and those are, those persons are per day.
Description in the class.
Yeah.
Right, and then this cost.
And then that, yeah.
Here, there is the cost, the, the fixed cost.
Okay.
Sorry, I tried to put it the best I could, but it's kind of dependent on...
And, and we might, and we might need to do a little fleet on that, right, you know, I just don't know, it's kind of...
I think this is...
It's round, really.
The thirty-two forty, is that?
Thirty-two forty.
Is the fixed cost, you know?
That's based off of eight students with the books, the Resource One.
And he second that. Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Back to you, Ethan.
Well, I think that will maybe help him, I hope, for it, if I don't do this right now.
Okay.
Number eleven. Discuss possible action regarding the following road fix, uh, road permits, B&amp;B Oilfield Services.
Uh, these are District Three.
Down there Beckham Road, uh, right there by Kenneth Baker's.
They're building new well.
Oh, yeah, they built a new location down there.
Do you need to look at it?
I just need to sign it, don't I?
No, just sign it, yeah.
You're gonna make a motion to approve?
Yeah, I'm making the motion.
I'll second. He's, uh, crossing 450. You know, the Williams pipeline will cross, but that's not here, that, that would be another day. This is for water, to get the rig. And it's gonna be crossing Beckham Road.
Number, number twelve, discuss possible action regarding the sheriff contracts with Axon Enterprise Incorporated for three car cameras and three body cameras in the amount of forty-three thousand, six hundred and one dollars and sixty-one cents purchased on state contract. Is there anything you'd like to add to that, or just body cameras and car cameras that set you up for?
Yeah, for three of them, uh, the, the difference is, we were purchasing the cameras for $4,000 apiece, which is what we kind of had planned through another vendor, however, they're doing away with that, and everything is now going to a subscription-based service, so this is kind of the, we can't find any to buy that are, you know, gonna be worth anything, so it's quite a bit of a price increase. This is for five years. Um, but unfortunately, in today's climate, you have to have cameras, and they kind of have us bent over a barrel for lack of a better way of describing it, but, um, it's a necessary item that we have to have, but thirty-three thousand over, over five years for three cameras as we're, because we're replacing three vehicles, so as we replace another three vehicles, this price will actually double, uh, in, you know, in the near future, so...
So, these, are they, is that good warranty on and stuff? I know they're there for our treatment.
Yeah, they, great warranty, uh, the, the body cameras, they replace after two and a half years, um, so that gets us up to date on body cameras. We don't currently run body cameras now, so this'll be something new for us as well. And then it also is the minimal amount of equipment that has to be installed in our vehicles. Uh, where right now, we have, uh, laptop computers in our vehicles. These cameras will integrate with those laptop computers, so we don't have to add a whole nother stream and a bunch more stuff to our vehicle, just the cameras.
That's what you want, then, huh?
Yes, sir.
So, move it.
I'll second. Second, dig, now, the only question I've got is, you have, you need to renew this contract every year?
I believe that's why I understand you, which is why y'all have to sign it. I think we're gonna probably try to pay for it in one month some, but being as is a five-year contract, the way I understand it, Shelley could...
It's just like a maintenance.
Yeah, so every year, we'll have to bring something to you for y'all to sign unless there's a way to...
Chipper rental.
Run it for five years.
Right.
And it'll double.
Yeah.
Right, so we can sign that, maybe.
And so, you made the motion, right?
And he seconded that.
Just one place in the show.
Yeah.
Shelley, I think there's two, there, there should be a one for the in-car cameras and one for the body cameras.
Oh, okay, I did stamp it right then, back in there, uh huh. I thought, well, why did I do that? Well, now I know.
Shelley.
I know.
See, you have a reason.
We'll let you fly. You'll be on camera next time.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
Number thirteen, discuss possible action regarding the resolution for the commercial property assessed Clean Energy C-PACE C dash P A C E program. What exactly is that?
Okay, that's what I told you about, this is the lady we talked to, this is about assessment.
Oh, yeah.
I can, yeah, I can, it is.
And do.
C-PACE is a.
I'm, I'm a little confused on these agenda items. You want her to talk on this one, tell us, or on the next one?
I don't, it doesn't matter to me.
I mean, if you're wanting to do the resolution without her talking, I mean, it doesn't matter. It's not gonna matter.
Can we, can we flip flop? The next one's the agreement.
Okay, so they are.
Well, usually the resolutions are done before the agreements, but it's however you guys want to do it. I mean, I don't care.
And in this case, it would be because the resolution isn't, gets a number and then it goes into the.
That's why, that's why I hit put it on there that way, because I did, I did.
And I didn't recognize it back there too.
And that's your name.
Nancy Graham, I have cards and I, yeah, I didn't know how in-depth you wanted me to talk through. Uh, I brought all the documents with the whole tablet you were ready to go ahead and, and opt in. I'm with the COG down in, or over in Tulsa, so you guys, your regional COG here is.
O E D.
Yes, exactly.
What'd they ask you?
So they will love it, I was totally.
I'm David, I'm on a mission from District Four.
Okay, it's nice to meet you.
I'll meet you.
I'm Chris.
Nice to meet you.
And I'm Randy, don't we talk on the phone?
Thank you, so do you want me to just give you a five minute, do you want another?
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Okay, so, um, C-PACE is a statewide templated program to bring a new form of financing, new scary kind of word for anything financing, but, um, it is a type of financing for clean energy kinds of things on commercial buildings. Clean energy kinds of things being like, if you need a new roof because it's leaking, then you're, you know, the air conditioning's going up and so a bit of commercial building more, um, in, improve the commercial building. This type of financing has been around, um, like statewide since, or sorry, nationally since two thousand and nine. And it was initiated, um, originally because of economic development. There were the two thousand and eight banking crisis and crash, and there was a need for a, a piece of, of financing that wasn't there. A good example of this is a gentleman in your county that is needing to this type of financing. Um, it is a long-term fixed rate portion of, so let's say it's an HVAC, uh, walls, uh, insulation, attics, new windows, new doors, and there's a million dollars that somebody that owns a commercial property that they, uh, need to come up with in order to save money down the long haul. C-PACE is secured as a special assessment, thus the county, that's where the county comes in and financing thing. So, uh, and it makes it kind of odd, but so the, the portion to buy all those things can be loaned out. C-PACE financiers, uh, these lenders that capital providers that, uh, nationwide, it's an open market system that loans, I can't talk about my hands either. So they, uh, they finance C-PACE, they're C-PACE lenders, specialty lenders, if you will, um, that underwrite and finance this portion. Uh, it's very secured because it is paid annually or every other, or twice a year. Property taxes are also paid twice a year. And it is, it can be, like, the length of the term of that loan can be, let's say it's a twenty, it's usually twenty to twenty-five, thirty years, it's an average of the lifespan of those improvements that are going in. So if you think about, you need that million dollars to make that building that's gonna immediately start running that, you know, the, uh, maintenance on and the bills and all that stuff. So, uh, the, the loan is made, the upgrades are done, and one or two years down the road, the first payment is made for that C-PACE loan, right? It is secured at, on the property, recorded on the property. The V O C C is the authority, the county, the statewide authority that needs to do that for this type of financing. But everything else happens outside of the county. Um, it can happen in the county, so how this kind of came about, uh, is the Tulsa and Oklahoma City areas were first approached by, um, developers that wanted a new C-PACE, because it's a kind of attractive type of financing that sits aside and you can do smart things, uh, new, um, new construction and existing construction, and you can do a twenty-four month retroactive, but, so, uh, the Tulsa COG, of which I worked for, this is my twenty-sixth year there, I had been doing something else and, uh, in two thousand and nineteen, eighteen, nineteen, we were approached, hey, look into this. They're doing it nationally and it makes sense, and do, do we have the ability to do this? And so working with the district attorney's office in Tulsa County, um, we really did look into it. We ran two pilot projects in Tulsa, figured out what worked and what didn't work by the statewide stakeholder group of treasurers, assessors, county commissioners, everything to see what does this need to do? And it became real clear that counties don't have the ability to do any, to, to, no liability, you know? If, if something goes into fault, there's no way to step in and, and secure or make a payment on the county and individual in the counties, um, so they don't have to. So the statute was modified in two thousand and twenty, then there was the COVID thing, so I'm working at home on computers for the next year and a half, the statewide stakeholder group within COG, and I was gladly transitioning more to this program because it was, it, you need something for so long and you just need a fresh, a fresh, you know, outlook. Um, this was developed primarily as an economic development program. So the statute modifications that say county, the board of county commissioners may, it's a voluntary program, may establish this C-PACE program, um, by resolution. We developed a template resolution that counties can do that, and so that's what I presented, um, through the commissioner here. And the second part of that is they, if, if they want to establish a program, they, by resolution, and they make, they must develop a program, application process criteria, what kinds of clean things? Who's gonna screen it? What, you know, the whole, the whole process of screening, well, what are these C-PACE, uh, loans when they consist of? The program, if you will, so, um, or they may develop their own program, or they can third-party, um, third-party, uh, uh, contract out to administer that program. So this is, the opt-in part for the county is kind of big and legal upfront, but so that it runs completely outside of the county. The second part, that second line I did, is a memorandum of agreement that, um, I forgot my stuff, this is the entire page. Um, that third-party contract out to INCOG to run the, the, the template program that already fourteen counties are running now. So this template program, I have with me some covers, you might have seen these, I don't know if we sell this stuff, so. So there's, um, it's mostly the bigger counties, and then it gets down to Marshall counties already in. Many counties are considering it, it, uh, I don't know if you want to hook that from your district attorney's office or not. That's the important part, because it's so contractual, is that your district attorney is comfortable with all of the, um, they, the, it really gets the county out of liabilities, but there's a, one of the attachments to the memorandum of agreement with INCOG to run the program is, well, we touched on the first attachment, is the resolution itself that will, would be signed saying that we want a program. Um, the, the second attachment is this form assessment contract, that is the key legal document that once you're in, once you adopt this program, then you, people in your county, this particular business that I was talking about can apply to C-PACE. An application that comes through the lender and the borrower apply using these application forms that the programs are, have, has already developed, using the criteria of, um, anybody else that owns money on that property has to give consent to the C-PACE loan going on there, have to be up, current property taxes, they have to, there's just this whole list of criteria. We make sure that it meets the state statute, and then we would submit, I would submit to the V O C C, um, a filled out and administratively approved assessment contract for signature, and then I, as your administrator, would then go and report that on the property. So this part is fairly scary, because it's just a lot of legal stuff. Um, but, yeah, it's an important part, because this is the program we opt into, we resolution, we pass a resolution, and then you opt into the program. So, uh, so questions?
Okay, uh, the, we, we adopt this, and then, then our DA has already approved one of these. I mean, we won't have to set up a, a deal to administer it, like you said, those.
Got it.
Yeah, right, they do, and I talked to them, but Chris is the same DA.
Yeah.
So he approved it there, but, and so we won't have to go through the, uh, making our own rules, like you said.
You're adopting these rules.
Right, I already approved it.
Right, and the cool thing about this too, when we proactively thought, if, let's say, ten, fifteen years from now, there's enough businesses that wanna do, you know, build and use C-PACE, that portion for those clean energy things, kind of, you know, funding it differently, uh, this, this agreement, you could undo in ninety days. It's an agreement that INCOG is your first administrator of the state of, of this, but you guys could set up your own program if you wanted to, because this funded in fees, so, uh, it's not necessarily cheap money, it's completely, uh, it's not tax money, it's not tax dollars, it's fully private lenders coming in with capital. So it's whatever they charge, I don't have the capital, I'm just the administrator part of it. But there are fees, like closing fees, so the county, you know, sometime down the road wanted to establish their own program, then you just give us a note, an email to say where we want to get up. Now, those things that are already secured as C-PACE, um, in your records, you, you stay there. They, they say if the property changes hands, the C-PACE, because it's treated as an assessment, a special assessment remains on the property. It is not accelerated, even in a foreclosure process, it is not accelerated. And a foreclosure process and all of that stuff is in this form legal document that you would receive filled out for me as your administrator. It'd come one time through the V O C C, you'd give that third signature on it, and then I'd record it, and then put their loans for it.
Well, I guess I got lost some of it. So what is the deal with us have to sign off?
That, that's.
I mean, why can't you just do that without, without us being involved?
Good que, that is a good question. The way that the program is set up, it, or the way that the statute is set up, it says specifically, it's a county responsibility. Assessments, only the county board of county commissioners can approve a voluntary assessment. So the property owner's asking for that, so is asking, would be asking for you to sign off on his assessment.
Right.
So you are the third signature on that assessment template. Um, as an administrator, I'm working on behalf of the county in, um, some places, not in Oklahoma, but the administrators do sign on the assessments, but it still is a county legal thing. So in this case, what we've done in developing this is greatly, it's all in the program guidelines, if you will, but it's really greatly handled between the buyer, the lender who's willing to underwrite that money and the borrower being the good risk, and then the administrator comes in and makes sure that, you know, we'll review a separate financing document. Um, we make sure that the county is, is also comfortable with this risk that these two people are taking, county in that document doesn't ever have to pay. Uh, but there's a delinquency process that's spawned in there, just like there would be within the.
So it, it brings no more work upon you or Renette or?
There's a, so we shouldn't, there is, um, in each one, in the resolution and in the memorandum of agreement, which has these, these old attachments, there is a place where INCOG, as your administrator, asks for a point of contact to get that assessment contract back through and/or if the guidance changes. If there's some, and in fact, there's been some drafts, we haven't changed that packet of guidance since, uh, August of two thousand and twenty-one. So there, just some antics and better descriptions and those kinds of things, but if it's gonna be an update to the guidance of program guidelines, it's the last part of this packet, then, um, which is also published online with the lenders, then we would want a point of contact to just make you aware that there is an updated.
No liability due to any.
No, correct, but, but it's your, it would be Woods County's program, so we'd want to update that. And then just this assessment contract will need, once a project's approved, I'm kind of new to, I'm three years new to commercial real estate, but they get down to these closing, and sometimes there's other lenders, and so there's a, there's a deadline timing. So I, I would be working to make sure that you advise your meeting, and you know that there's gonna be this thing with dates on it coming through the V O C C for that final signature. And I'd be here too, so it gets reported at the V O C C, but part of, and the county legally needs to make sure that it's filed, it's recorded, right? And you're legally giving by contract to INCOG to me to make sure that that's filed. So I'd be here to take that from the V O C C with the recording fees and mortgage taxes. There's mortgage taxes that are paid on that too, when it's reported, so it kind of gets ready then. Um, and on the improvement, just like any other.
Right. That would be the main thing that is to the county is the improvement. So I only have one question. A case of a sale to another deal, where, is there any protection in there for the counties? It can be a real pain in the neck, say a new, somebody bought this existing commercial property or whatever. Do they have the ability to come protest that stuff?
They, the lender, if the lender and the borrower want to change that contract at all, like pay it off early, or, um, if the new, if somebody bought that building and there's, there's an assessment on there, that yes, the county has let that assessment, so the terms of that assessment, if they change those terms of this big huge thing, then, yeah, we would have to go from here, because you guys sign, like, to, to release it for another, in other words.
I understand that, but.
But no liability, no, you don't have to step in and pay, even the sheriff's option process is described under here. So the C-PACE lender could say, um, he's into fall, he hasn't paid for two years, and we want to start this, start that process. Um, so it would, it would be handled like any other judgment, um, on a property, and almost always a secondary lender would step in and bring the current, but if it didn't, if that didn't happen, then it, and then it ends up being sole sheriff's option, the county taxes come off the top, then the assessment that's in arrears plus any kind of, um.
I understand all that, but, but what I'm saying is that new purchaser?
Yeah.
A year or so afterwards, he comes in and he, he, these new things they've done, and then they're getting assessed for?
Uh-huh.
On there, they come in and.
You don't watch.
They protest that, that those taxes were too high, then we have, that, that starts to baller roll, and we have to pay a legal attorney to fight that deal and.
Yeah, I have discussion, but yeah, I understand, so there, uh.
I mean, if we have no liability, I, I think it should be written in there that that can't happen on those assessed.
It must be in this eighteen-page thing, so that's why the district attorney, it's like, we want to make sure that they're comfortable with. So that's a good point, and it must be that they can't, that they, a new buyer would not have any authority or, or ability to, that the county is protected in here, or in the statute, you know, it's on the statute. There must be an assessment contract itself.
I mean, because the value of this, the new air conditioner, all that stuff is gonna be put in place when it's put in place.
Right.
And then if it's down the road five to ten years, and that's work that, I don't think that we should have to fight a legal battle.
Correct, and that actually I do remember back when.
Well, we're looking at the door for a banking company to put some LED lights or whatever.
Example of, yeah, the assistant district attorney, uh, in Tulsa, when these, these legal forms were being developed, used that as an example of a jail, um, contractor or something. Yes, that is, that has been looked at, I'm sorry that I don't legally know how to find where that is, but I do recall discussion, I'm sure that that, I'm fairly sure that that, because I can't point it out.
I mean, I understand that, that it stays with the property.
Yes.
And even in a sheriff's sale. And even in a sheriff's sale, they can't get rid of this. We'll call it this link.
There was a concern, I think, I do know where it is. Okay, just coming back. Uh, it's in the indemnification of the county. Um. To the fullest extent, the capital provider hereby released indemnified defendant wholly harmless the indemnified parties, which is the county, from, against any and all claims, actions, lawsuits, damages, penalties, judgments, or liabilities included and without limitation using attorneys' litigation expenses arising from any, in any manner from the project which is the subject of the financing, the property, the contract, the financing agreement. And or, yeah, so the, the county is wholly indemnified. And I was able to find it. So except there's this one line that the, the capital providers wanted to put in. It says, in no event shall the capital provider, the idiot, Mr. Kellman, or something, something about if the county willfully did something wrong on purpose. That was put in there. So there was a, you know, they wanted to be, the lenders wanted to be covered for that too. But yeah, in order for the lenders coming in and working in this market, they also signed an agreement with INCOG to use these same legal forms. And they were, an association of these lenders, well, part of the process when we put together the legal forms, because they needed to be comfortable, and they, they have attorneys that are going to go out and assess Woods County's program before the first loan is given. It's a part of that underwriting, because this is a county that exchanges hands, commercial, mortgage, back to your C and D. That's.
I know, but our assessor will assess them. It's like they do everybody else. That's what I'm getting at, is a protest.
Yes.
Against the assessor.
I think the indemnification clause that was put in there takes care of that. That's, yes. Good point.
Well, we can check on that. That's, that's my only concern left in this deal. And, and that can be handled through the contract.
Yeah.
If it's not there. So, I mean, I'm all in favor of this. I, that's a motion.
Cause I'm good with it as long as, like you said, we.
Well, that's, we've got to look over that contract before we put our John Henry on that paper.
Well, what, what, that's the, so in opting in, you are agreeing to that contract. That's why the district attorney's office being very comfortable with it. And it was a development in Tulsa County District Attorney.
Right, but.
So that's, you are adopting this template form contract. And you're not signing it now, but you're adopting it as a template, so that after a project is worked, it can take a while to work a project, and if it's ready to be approved for last-minute documents or whatever, I, then I reach out to somebody here and say, this is looking like it's going to be closing on this date, and it's going to be coming through. So there's going to be just a short window. And this, what the assistant district attorneys then do for this contract to get onto that board, is they typically have stamped it approved as to form. And so that's all there is, because they've already approved the form, assistant contract.
Okay. So what can we do? I mean, I, I think you guys are understanding where I'm coming from. And all, all I want to do before we.
So, well, maybe.
Do what we can do. Right.
Well, the district attorney, I, I, will make sure that that's what he's reading.
Well, I, I'm confused on these agenda items, I guess, is what I'm getting at, is what we need to do on this.
And let me explain, and I have a suggestion too, which I hope. So he can't even start the application until the county has a program, like legally, I can't even, you know, right, so, right? So the statute itself, Oklahoma statute, signed by governor sit in 2020, says that the county should use two separate action items. One, the resolution. Two, adopt a program.
Right.
Or create a program or third-party update. So it's two of the agreement. Those are the two action items.
Okay.
The first, the resolution itself is, it all works together, but the resolution itself just, you appoint, you could say chairman of the V O C C is the point of contact that I reach out to, get a phone call, saying this is coming. So, and then if the resolution gets passed today, there's a resolution number, and it goes into the agreement. The second action item that got passed today is the agreement saying you've adopted this program. We can still make, and we will still make sure that you're comfortable, that your district attorney looks at that very question and making sure that that indemnification clause is good. It's, it is a memorandum of agreement to adopt the program. So if, at some point, I would say fairly quickly, because if you have a gentleman that wants to be applying and working and working with the lender, so fairly quickly, we'd just, we would withdraw and exit the agreement. So we would just stop processing. We would, we would, I'd send an email, or you could send an email, but we won't have this thing.
Well, all I'm asking is what do we need to adopt here today? And, and we don't need to adopt anything our district attorney hasn't looked at.
That's what I think.
You know, is all I'm getting at.
So the cover sheet, it's got tabs and all that, which is often, I, I know. So the resolution is the first document under that cover sheet. There's a signature page on page five. By adopting the resolution, that's the first, that action item there.
And the second page has who we're going to fill in.
Yeah, we could do recordings, I mean, Jerry. I would suggest not a name, because, and then I can just meet here and it's face-to-face mostly, but it's just easier to not have to change out a name if there's changes, if you just put a position or.
Right, exactly. I agree with that.
Okay, then I, we must make a motion that we're going to adopt this.
Pass the resolution, yeah.
Pass the resolution, but, but, because we have to set up a program or whatever, then that next step is, then after we do that, we can take it to the DA, and then when he gives his blessing, then we can.
Till, till that time, we, we really have no, even if we adopt the resolution.
Yeah, the, the resolution doesn't adopt the program. The resolution's just necessary because the statute says it's two parts.
Well, I'll make the motion, we, we create a resolution.
Okay, I'll, I'll second.
And in that resolution, we need to.
Put someone's name in there. Or, right?
Yeah.
Or position, yeah, position would be better.
Well, what you got, now here's my, my thoughts on this, that maybe the assessor.
So typically, the assessor has absolutely nothing to do with this program. It was written that way. On, on the goodness. So, I'll, what are they, and what are they doing? Is that you'll notify them when there's paperwork and stuff like that? One, when there's one assessment approved project, when there is a, a CPAC special assessment that's ready to go through the V O C C and be recorded, an approved project.
Well, and it's going to be recorded in my office. You can put me or you can.
I either put you either way. Yeah, so that's many of the counties have done that. These don't happen very often. In fact, most of the counties that opted in have not yet even lodged a project. Right. So they're just, the part about the opting in, as we talked about, it, it's good for economic development, because it opens up the.
Oh, I'm, I'm all good with that. But I mean, the clerk or, or the assessor, in my opinion, would be better to contact people.
Okay, for the V O C C agenda?
What do you guys think?
Oh, I'd say, I agree. I think that's what, that's about, what kind of work would you guys, you or Renetta, have to do?
Well, I don't think it'll be that much, because, I mean, they're going to.
It's going to be on the office anyway.
Yeah. So I'm the one who takes the agendas anyway, so.
You know, I.
It would be better than.
Whatever's simple.
Well, and that's what, you know, Renetta can handle it all. Okay, well, but Shelley, Shelley.
She's going to have to get with me to get the agenda in.
Right, and Shelley put it on. So I'm, I'm good with clerk. Yeah.
I mean, that's kind of what they want, isn't it?
Whatever works for you. I mean, it is really your program, and I'll be working with somebody whoever, whatever works for you. So that same position, do you understand that?
Yeah, I'm standing, so everybody knows.
And that same position.
Number 13 or 14?
Uh, we're doing on, this is number 13, because it's the resolution.
And then we'll do 14 then. This, how old would you think it is?
Well, it's an actual agreement, so. I, I tell you what, if you wanted to go ahead and pass it, we would just, you could tear it up if you find out, if we find out that he doesn't agree with those indemnification.
It's going to take his signature, is what you're saying?
No, it doesn't need a signature at all. No. It, he just, your question was good.
It, it doesn't, this doesn't take the DA's signature anywhere?
No. They took V O C C, third-party contract.
But they've signed off on Woodbridge County for it.
Yes. They, they have the program. People can apply.
That's our district attorney too.
Okay. So he'll see that, that assessment contract, he'll put the stamp on it that says approved as to form.
Gotcha.
But, so, yeah, I, I want to make sure that I can definitively say that indemnification takes care of the issue of the new buyer coming in with concerns about what he bought. It will be disclosed, because it's on the property, the title company, I mean, it's, we checked title before CPAC one goes on, so they'll know that that's there. They wouldn't even buy it otherwise. But yeah, to make sure that they can't come back to the county and, uh, or prior to you can revenge yourself.
I think so.
Discuss possible action regarding the CPAC, C-P-A-C-E agreement.
I'm making the motion, we approve the agreement, I guess.
Yeah.
I'll second. Oh, man, I'm good with that.
I'm fine.
Agreement, okay. They have to get a copy of the district attorney's signature as well, so I could get a copy of that, and I can.
Okay, I'll make a copy of it for you. And I'll get the resolution number on it, on all of it, so that you'll already have it.
And can I send you, send you, you know, you a scanned copy with the signature on it, or would you write it, uh, the original, the original on that? What do you want to do?
That'll be over. Okay, but I'm, I'm going to ask one favor. That if we get a copy of the Tulsa County agreement to.
No, I just took it out of the folder. I even brought copies of the, of several of the, um, projects in Tulsa that have already.
That won't be hard to do though, right?
Oh, not at all. I had the folder.
No, that's okay.
I had it in my stuff.
I would just like to compare.
Yeah, it's absolutely, I mean, yes, it's, it is the same document. And in fact, the Woodward County one, and the, all of those kinds, Pontcharl, Marshall, and all those. Yeah. It's huge, so it's going to be this whole pack of, it's going to be big. So it's going to be this big.
Okay.
You want it in one PDF?
How, how would be the easiest?
Did you just want to read it on a computer, or did you need to just mail it to you?
You, just mail it. I prefer.
I'm glad to, yes. Okay. I'm like, what you prefer, okay. So, and then, yeah.
Yeah, so you'll just hang around and just email it to you.
I am glad we're starting with, thank you. I'll write down the specifics, so we make sure that we have that. Do you want to, you have the program?
I would like to, so that, as a self-respect account, I can fit with my stuff and, we'll make a folder.
All right, well, thank you.
Move on.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Yeah.
This is our heat that you got here.
Yes, you had a separate one then, right? Did you?
This is the one that you handed to us.
Yeah, I didn't realize that you already had it. I'll print it out, ready to sign. It's the same thing, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Are we ready for number 15?
Yeah.
Yes. Discuss possible action regarding the use of the stage for AHS Homecoming Pep Rally on September 29, 2023.
I'm good with that. I don't agree with Yoby.
Pep rally, over here on this, where's the stage? Over here?
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Amy's going to be in that, I think. Pep rally?
Aye.
Motion carried. Number 16. Move like purchase orders?
I'm moving to do so. I'll second that.
Anybody got any new business?
If I do, I forgot it.
Is Steve still here?
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
They're, they were here for the CPAC.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
I think, unless you guys want the floor.
That was why we're here.
Second agenda?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Don't do business, anybody? Number 18, motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion, and I'll second.
All right.